Regular meeting. At this time, Mrs. Luton, please make a record that all board members are present this evening. And at this time, I'd like to ask Teresa Bledsoe to come forward. And she's going to introduce our special guests for the evening.
Good evening, Dr. Frederick, the board members. We have with us tonight two students from Field Elementary School. They'll be leading the pledge of allegiance for us. This is Alishka Price and Alex Kennedy. These field eagles were selected by their school staff because of their outstanding efforts to model the IB learner profile. They are accompanied tonight by their principal, Dr. Janelle Bagwell, and their family members. So we have a good support network here for these students tonight. Dr. Bagwell says that through their years at Field, Alishka and Alex have grown as knowledgeable inquirers and thinkers. They have been reflective communicators. They are principled in their actions and open-minded to others' perspectives. They are well-balanced between school and hope as they continue to develop their passions. And they are being risk-takers by being here tonight to lead us in...
[laughter]
They are also mastering a foreign language, which they will demonstrate for us tonight, as they lead the pledge in both English and Spanish. So for all of you who don't know the pledge in Spanish, as I'm sure most of us... Oops. We will...
Which one's going first?
They are going... We'll say it in English first, and they will say it together. So if you will please rise. And then if you will step forward and lead us in the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
My heart is open, ready to inquire and learn. My hands are open, ready to help and share. My heart is open, ready to listen and care. In every way, I will use my resources to the best I can be.
You may outside. I'm there. There's the styles of meos de América. Y a la política que representa una nación bajo Dios, en que decide con libertad y justicia para todos.
Good job. Good job.
Thank you, Alishka.
That's cool. That is a first. Yeah. That's impressive. Very impressive.
Thank you very much, and family members, thank you for bringing your children.
Thank you.
Now, for our Honoring Excellence recognition tonight, I would like to invite Marty Moore to come forward and recognize some of our partners who have helped our students get off to a healthy start for the school year.
I'm gonna cue my video. Hopefully, we don't play it at the same time. Well, so much for that hope. It's a hand-eye coordination piece for me. Some days, it works, and some days, it doesn't. One thing I think we all have in common is we've heard that old adage that when you have good health, you've got everything. And I wonder, though, how often we've thought about what it takes to secure good health and to maintain it. While much of our healthiness is hereditary, we know that there are very intentional things that we can do to ensure a healthy start for children. Among those are healthy nutrition and diet, regular immunizations, good dental hygiene and good dental exam, dental health care, well-care, sick care, vision screening, and eye care. And the earlier and more preventative these features are, the healthier the child. Jean Graybill, who is our Director of Health Services, works in this field all the time and has the wonderful privilege of working with the partners that are going to be presented tonight. And she's helped me gather this team of what I'm gonna call blessings to the community, specifically to Springfield Public Schools. They have lived by the credo, "Start where you are, use what you have, do what you can." And like the best of organizations in our community, they've done it without a lot of fanfare and without a lot of notice. And over several years, eight to 10 years, they have invested millions of dollars in health care for our most under-resourced children. And tonight, I'm privileged and honored to bring them forward to you to recognize them. I also want to thank Ren Lubring, who is our social media specialist, who put together the video that you're gonna get to watch that honors these partners who helped students in Springfield Public Schools get off to a healthy start. And now it won't queue. Really?
[singing]
And so, honored guests, if you would come forward, as we call your name, and guests, if you would hold your applause until the end, we'd like to present each of these honored partners with a certificate. First, from Jordan Valley, Dr. Matt Stinson, their medical director.
I'd rather call him big time, but okay.
No, just if you'd stand, please. From the Springfield-Green County Health Department, Kevin Gibson, who is the Director of Health, Pam Bryant, who is the Administrator of Maternal-Child and Family Health Programs, Cindy Wyman, who is their Immunization Coordinator.
Is that gonna happen on my watch?
And from the Ronald McDonald Charities and the Tooth Truck, the President and CEO, Bonnie Keller, Mindy Munoz, the Program Director of the Tooth Truck, and Dr. Sarah Chimino, Tooth Truck. And last, but certainly not least, from the Vision Clinic, Dr. Steve Rice and Dr. Brad Lewis. A round of applause for these amazing... Comments? Anyone on the board?
Yeah. Anyone?
Hold that thought.
Yeah. Hang on a second. Alina? Did you go?
I just wanna say thank you for being here tonight, and thank you for what you've done year after year, and for the partnerships that you have and the impact that you have for our children. We appreciate it from the bottom of our heart.
Thank you. Agreed. Thank you so much. Thank you for being here. Okay, we're moving on to our meeting opening, approval of agenda. At this time, do I have a recommendation that the Board approve the agenda this evening as presented?
I'll move.
Thank you, Jerry Lee. Motion? Do I have a second?
Second.
Charles? And at this time, please vote. Voting is complete. At this time, we're moving on to public comments to address agenda items. Mrs. Luton, do we have comments, public comments? None. Okay. Moving on to our consent agenda items, Consent Agenda III and Consent Agenda IV, Consent Agenda V, all came before us at our study session. And we've had the opportunity the last two weeks to have questions answered, and hopefully we've taken care of that. And so at this time, at our regular meeting, we do vote on all three, III, IV, and V. So at this time, do I have a motion from the Board to approve our consent agenda items, approval of minutes, contracts, agreements, bids, and change orders, and personnel elections, promotions, terminations, and compensation plan changes?
So moved.
Thank you. Mr. Rose... Tam Rosenbergi, and do I have a second?
Second.
Alina Leonard. And so at this time, we will vote for our consent agenda items. Thank you. Voting is complete. Moving on to our Treasures Report. Carol Embry.
Good evening. We have posted for you our standard information for your review. And I would highlight for you that we do have some budget amendment information. And those budget amendments are very slight, mostly relative to the Project Lead the Way grant amendments. And also, we do have a budget transfer and rent expenditure elimination relative to the purchase of the Shining Stars building. The changes overall to the operating budget result in a slight increase to the operating fund balance projection for the end of the year. Last month, we had reported to you 16.86 percent, and this brings... this budget amendment brings it to 16.99 percent. So we'll continue to monitor that, as I've shared with you in the past. The September payroll is the big payroll for public education, because that's the payroll where all staffs get paid for the first time. So our teams are busy making that happen in collaboration and cooperation with the HR staffs, and we're very appreciative of their hard work through that. And after that final... that September payroll is generated, we will be evaluating our salary and benefit budget projections for the year, and we'll be bringing forward in October than any budget amendments relative to that new data. So the financial audit continues, and actually, they've been in district this week, and next week, they'll be in district also. And some conversations are happening with Dr. Frederick and Dr. Jungman. And they are anticipating at this time that they'll be able to bring the financial audit report to you for the November meeting instead of the December meeting. So that's the plan.
Agreed.
If you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer any of those.
I'll just mention that the auditors had a meeting that I... or a meeting, and speaking on behalf of the Board. That was on Monday, and I will tell you that we spent a good deal of time with asking lots of questions. They ask lots of questions, and I feel like that we're... that we'll get a very thorough audit from our crew. There's five here, is that correct?
I believe that's correct.
Talked to five.
For this week.
Okay. Yeah. Any questions regarding the 1, 2, 3, 4, 5, 6, 7, 8 attachments that we had to read over regarding our budget? Okay. At this time, do I have a motion that the Board approves the September 2016 Treasures Report as presented?
So moved.
Thank you. Charles Taylor, a second?
Second.
Thank you. Jerry Lee. So at this time, we'll vote. Okay, voting is complete. We're gonna move... we'll be moving on to our information reports. So we'll be starting out this evening with an information report from Mike Wood. Raise your hand for kids presentation. And I don't know if anyone needs to introduce Mike, but we're happy to have you here, so...
Well, thank you, Dr. Frederick, members of the Board. I appreciate all that you do for the Springfield School District and the students within this district. I'm a 30-year educator, so I understand the work that you all put into this. Cigarette tax increases are not new to the state of Missouri. 2006, there was an 80-cent proposal that was not accepted by the voters. Again, in 2012, there was a 73-cent increase, with part of that money going into K-12 higher education and smoking cessation programs, and that also failed. So I guess the question before us, why in 2016 would a cigarette tax increase before voters be successful? And as you may have heard, as of today, we will be on the ballot. Supreme Court ruled in a unanimous decision that the Secretary of State did the right thing in certifying us to be on the ballot. So we will definitely be on the ballot. But let's talk about why this effort is a little different. Amendment III, also known as the Early Childhood Education and Health Amendment, before this was drafted, early childhood supporters throughout the state spent two years having conversations within communities throughout our entire state. They met with stakeholders, but I think more importantly, they listened to the needs of all Missourians. They crafted a policy that has a real chance of passing with the voters. The latest polling information I've seen still is very favorable for passage. And that policy, basically, if you're not aware of it, 75 to 85 percent of the increase goes to early childhood education. 10 to 15 percent goes to hospitals, healthcare facilities for early childhood health. I thought it was very interesting, the recognition you gave under your Honoring Excellence. Those are the exact types of programs that could receive funding for birth-to-age-five programs in the healthcare field. And then 5 to 10 percent would go to smoking cessation programs throughout the state. I find it very interesting that Missouri is near the bottom for preschool funding. Only 3 percent of Missouri four-year-olds are currently enrolled in a state-funded program, especially compared to our neighboring states. That's pretty embarrassing, actually, for the state of Missouri. Amendment III is about quality and access to early childhood education. The new investments in preschool programs, home visitation programs like parents and teachers, resources for professional development for our pre-K teachers, and making early childhood education more affordable for more families is the key to Amendment III. Research is very clear. Investments in early childhood education is a winner for our economy. It lowers the dropout rate, it reduces crime, it cuts costs of social services, and improves health and academic achievement of children. All this translates into savings for our taxpayers. Amendment III is a 60-cent tax... cigarette tax increase that's phased in over a four-year period of time, 15 cents a year. It creates a lockbox to make sure that the money stays with the early childhood education programs. It reforms the Coordinating Board for Early Childhood Education, and this group is the group that will be in charge of distributing the grants under this program. The reason the lockbox was created and the Early Childhood Commission was reformed is so we didn't have the supplanting of funds taking place, such as we had when the gaming funds came into education. So the legislature cannot touch the $300 million that is set aside for early childhood education. Some people are calling this controversial. I'm not... it may not be drafted in the way you and I would have drafted it, but after two years of conversations throughout the state of Missouri, it was drafted in a way that we could get it passed. The big controversy comes because of not what it does, but because of the fight between big tobacco and small tobacco. Currently, Missouri, under the Master Tobacco Settlement, has a 67-cent incentive, or maybe incentive's not the right word. I like to use the word loophole. But small tobacco companies, discount cigarettes, you know, I drove down Interstate 44, and you see signs all over the place for discount cigarettes. Under that Master Tobacco Settlement, they pay 67 cents less per pack of cigarette than small tobacco companies do. Every other state has closed that loophole. This Amendment III would close that loophole in the state of Missouri with the money going to the lockbox. That's an $80 million subsidy to the small tobacco companies in the state of Missouri. So you can see why the small tobacco companies are out there opposing this initiative. They have 80 million reasons in which to oppose this initiative. The effort is being funded by big tobacco. I stand here and say I wish it wasn't, but we know why they're gonna do it, because they're seeing the dollar signs as well. If they can get the level playing field with the small tobaccos, they think they can cash in on this as well. But I think what you've gotta do is cut through that. Let me address three other issues that seem to be concerns for people out there. One is that funds could go to private and parochial schools. The Constitution of Missouri currently protects K-12 education funds from going to private and parochial schools. It does not protect pre-K school... pre-K funds from going to private and parochial. In fact, that already happens with Title I funds and Missouri's preschool project funds. On the other end of the spectrum, in higher education, there's no protection from public money going to private institutions. It would be similar to a student that receives a Bright Flight or an Access Missouri Scholarship going to Evangel or Drury. So yes, there is a... it allows the tax dollars to go to private entities. And the thought behind that is a couple, in my view. One is, in rural Missouri, there are a number of school districts that don't have the space capacity in order to which to start... in which to start a pre-K program. They could enter into an agreement with a private entity in which to lease space and/or combine programs with them, as long as they meet the standards set out by the Board. The second issue, I think, and I think of my community, very similar to yours, we just built an early childhood center in our school district. We have three parochial schools very close to us. They could all go together and apply for a grant for professional development with those teachers in order to prove the quality of pre-K, whether a student went to the public pre-K or whether they went to a private pre-K, the quality would be increased because of that professional development, and they could do it in unison and together and bring our community together for that purpose. The second issue that's brought forward is the makeup of the revamped Commission on Early Childhood Education, that there's not enough public educators on that. Well, all meetings will be public, and as they establish the rules and regulations to administer these grants, those will go through the regular rulemaking process, which allows for public comment through that. The other thing I will say about the Commission is this, that's the one part that the Constitution allows the legislature to change. Now, I'm not saying I wanna go in and change it immediately, because we could get something we weren't necessarily asking for, but within the Constitution, it does allow the legislature to go in and change the makeup of that commission. So I would think if we got down the road and we got this fully implemented, and the commission wasn't working the way it needed to work, there's the ability for the legislature to change that as well. And the third thing I will say is there's no guarantee for every school district to receive money. It's not run through the foundation formula. But I will say this, since the distribution is based upon population, and since when this is fully implemented, there's gonna be $300 million that's gonna be available, there are not going to be enough private and parochial schools to be able to absorb $300 million if the commission wanted to send it all that way. And I don't think the commission would wanna send it that way. There are opportunities out there for school districts, if they wanna improve the access and quality to public education, to surely receive the grants that they so richly deserve. The one thing I will guarantee you, that if this fails, with the current political environment we have in the state of Missouri, it'll be very difficult for this type of investment to ever be made once again in early childhood education in our state. While it may not... while the proposal may not be perfect in everyone's eyes, we have a once-in-a-lifetime chance to do something great for our young children in our state and our next generation. With that, I'd be more than happy to answer any questions.
Comments or questions this time?
First, a comment. I truly appreciate the fact that you took the approach of sort of outlining the alternative position. And you took them seriously, right? You didn't dismiss it out of hand. Now, I happen to agree completely with you, those are wrong positions, but at least you gave them fair hearing. But my question is, is the particular mechanism by which the funds will be allocated, is that still an effectively negotiated rulemaking?
Yes. There's nothing within the proposal in the Constitution, because we're going Constitution-wise, other than the broad parameters that they have to go to improving quality and access of early childhood education, under the 75 to 85 percent. Then there's parameters under the 10 to 15, and the 5 to 10 for the smoking cessation. So there's some general parameters, but yeah, the rulemaking process is still gonna have to be done. It's very similar to the federal government passing ESSA, and now we're in the fight on the rulemaking process over that. So you give them the parameters, and then it seems like the real fun starts.
I hope it's not too similar.
I would agree with you. But I'm very hopeful. I mean, obviously, we have the Commissioner of Education or their appointee on there, that I think somebody that will be on there and that will look out for public education as the rulemaking process starts.
Do you have your talking points available?
I can get them to you. They're kinda handwritten. You can go to Raise Your Hands for Kids, and there's more information up there than you ever probably wanted to see on that.
I'm jotting down as fast as you're talking.
But yeah, I think Jerry probably has my email. If you are... the Board Secretary has an email address for me. If you wanna send me a comment, I'll be more than happy to give what I've written down here.
Okay. Any other?
I guess more comment than a question. You know, I think Mike brought up, the opportunity is now. While it may not be perfect, there's not any other... I mean, this is the last, what I would call, low-hanging fruit of funding in the state of Missouri. And I would hate to see that go somewhere else other than our kids. And like I said, it's not perfect, but I think, you know, once you start the regulatory process and you start putting all this together, you can carve this out to a really good thing for us. I think it's 13 and a half million dollars for Green County.
I believe that is correct, yes.
13 and a half million for Green County.
I live in Franklin County. It's a little over $5 million. I do know that number.
I mean, I can think of so many things that we can do with 13 and a half million dollars for our kids in Green County to do that, so...
I think to Jerry's point, I'll just throw in a personal... you know, I said I was... I've been a career educator for 30 years. It's been a rough... an education policy for over half that amount of time. And within a week's period of time, I had both sides of this issue. The people that were for it and against it wanted me to work on their campaign. Now, I had the ability to do that, because I no longer work in a public school setting or for an association. I'm an independent contractor. And so I started looking at it and decide where my heart needed to be on this issue. And I think, very much like Jerry said, where I wouldn't have done it the way in which they did it, you have to respect that they went out and spent two years talking within communities out there, and then it comes down to, I would hate to miss this opportunity. I compare it frankly to a Senate Bill 380, the amount of impact that had with raising money for school districts. That probably had more, you know, hoops to jump through sometimes and reform efforts within it, but I think it is a phenomenal opportunity, obviously, for the next generation of kids coming through our public schools.
Mike, can you speak briefly to the... just a full scope, there's another tax issue that's a tobacco tax.
There is.
Not your issue, but for full awareness for the Board.
Obviously, not working on that campaign, but it's a 23-cent tax increase, and it's called... it's on the ballot as Prop A. And the money for that would go to roads and bridges in the state of Missouri. And that was put on by small tobacco. That was their counter to the big tobacco's proposal out there. The one thing that I will say about that proposal, it kinda has what we call the poison pill in it, which is if the Secretary of State, I think, certifies any other ballot initiative that raises cigarette taxes, doesn't have to be passed by the voters, the Secretary of State just has to approve, put it on the ballot, or if the legislature would put one on the ballot, not that they'd ever do that, the 23 cents rolls off. So think about that. I mean, if I'm small tobacco and I just supported a 23-cent increase, why wouldn't I go out and spend a million dollars to collect signatures, get something the Secretary of State to certify it, and my 23 cents rolls back off? So that's the poison pill that's in that one as well. But that was their alternative to the 60-cent increase that was proposed by big tobacco. And yes, I think it very, very well could be confusing the voters. I don't know if there's gonna be a campaign for amendment... or for Prop A. I guarantee you, there's gonna be a campaign both for and against on Amendment III.
I don't think they thought they'd make it.
And that's some of the concerns. They got a very, very high percentage of their signatures were certified. I mean, higher than I've ever seen on any initiative petition as well. So they made the effort, and it ended up being good enough to get it on the ballot. So we'll see whether or not they actually campaigned for it. But for voters, it could be very confusing. I just saw a 23-cent increase for roads and bridges on my ballot, now I'm looking for something for early childhood. So we're really gonna have to, on our campaign for Amendment III, make sure we really get the word out.
And is it either or?
Nope. You could vote for both of them, and then the courts, what I read today, the courts would have to decide whether or not their 23 cent actually stayed, or whether or not the one that was just passed rolls that one off, because obviously, it was approved by voters. Hmm. Yeah, that's what we say all the time.
That's not what I would say if I were you.
One of the other issues that I think, particularly that I've heard in around this community, is local control of funds. And here, we got a coordinating board, that the money goes to this board, and so now we've lost local control of the dollars. And I think that can be addressed in the regulatory process, and we've had that discussion of how can we coordinate? Because when you start throwing 13 and a half million dollars out here, it's gonna be a feeding frenzy.
Of course.
Which is fine, but if there's a way that we can do something locally...
And if... and if you think about it, if you sit on a commission, and you could say, "Green County is applying for this number of, you know, their money," and they're gonna decide how it should be spent in Green County as a committee, you know, if I served on that commission, I go, "Thank goodness, that's 13 and a half million dollars. I have to decide, you know, where it's going. I'm gonna give the money to them, let their local people decide how that money gets distributed." And I think that will be a model for a number of communities. They're gonna have large requests for money go through, because I think it makes sense. Why don't you coordinate at the local level? Everybody can come to that local level, move the community forward as one, as opposed to pitting yourself against each other with a state commission. to pitting yourself against each other with a state commission.
A lot, a lot to think about, and we appreciate your taking the time to come.
Thank you very much for the time.
Thank you very much. Thank you.
Thanks, Mike.
We do.
What do we do? You want a recommendation?
No, no, I mean, we're going to move on.
Oh, yeah.
This time, yeah, but, okay. So we'll move on to 7.02, and Board, please provide feedback. Any other questions or comments? I think we have an expert at the table that can certainly help us with anything going forward. Okay, thank you. We're going to talk about Explore.
Little different topic. Well, it's my pleasure to bring you the end-of-year report for Explore 2016, and I do this on behalf of the large Explore planning team and everybody else in the system that worked so hard to make Explore happen this year. So tonight's present, whoops. There we go. Tonight's presentation is divided into three categories. First, we'll talk just briefly about the mission that our planning team established about a year ago. We'll also review the three goals that really drove the planning and the implementation of Explore. And then we'll move into a little bit of a section that outlines the growth and the expansion that summer learning has experienced in the last three years. As Dr. Youngman came on board two years ago, he quickly identified the summer months as an opportunity to expand learning for students and for families, and it drove much of what you'll see tonight in this, in this presentation. So simply, our mission, we wanted students to explore a fun, engaging, relevant, and personal summer learning experience, and we wanted that experience to be driven by their passion, inquiry, and community connections. Those were really the focuses that drove us. The goals behind those, and this is probably a little better than that screen to see, at the heart of it was support for under-resourced students. Everything we did, we really kept that frame in mind. We also wanted to really engage with partners in a, in a very different way, a more robust way, and create experiences for students that maybe they otherwise wouldn't get during the regular school year, or even at home at times. And then finally, if we were to do these things, we really wanted to make sure we did everything to increase enrollment. So we wanted to make sure there was awareness around the programming, and that we did everything to provide kids access to, to this exciting opportunity. So, well, I'll go into just a brief, kind of three-year comparison of how summer school has transformed into, into Explore. And these are just some statistics that we thought illustrated the work behind the expansion. So first is the number of sites that we made available for Explore. Three years ago, there were 22 schools open during June for, for summer school at the time. Last year, we had 25 sites open, and during Explore, we had 32 sites. The real focus there was at the elementary level. If we had schools that were available, that weren't under some sort of construction, we tried to open those in those neighborhoods. We wanted kids to have the ability to walk to school and to access those learning opportunities easily. Next are meals. Three years ago, we served about 28,000 meals to our students. Last year, that took, there was a huge increase to almost 150,000 meals that were served. And during Explore, we served almost 350,000 meals to our students. And serving meals is not the, the goal of Explore, but ensuring that our students have, have health, have full tummies during the summer months is certainly the key to making sure they have the real opportunity to learn.
Ben, I want to just back up a minute, because you said it wasn't the goal. However, I consider that support for our underserved students.
And it is, yeah. It certainly is in that category, and we know that had to be there for our students to be successful. Next, we look at instructional days. Three years ago, we had 20 instructional days during the summer months. Those were primarily half-days. Last year, again, we had 20 days, but we expanded that to full days, so students could come from morning to afternoon, much like the regular school year. And in Explore, as you know, we increased that to 44 full days of instruction for our Next is instructional hours. Three years ago, we, we provided 265,000 instructional hours to our students. Two years ago, 785,000, and during Explore, 1.6 million hours of instruction to our students. So it's kind of a mind-boggling number there, and we're proud of that. Again, as we think about breaking down barriers and providing access, transportation was a real key for us. Three years ago, there were 30 bus routes associated with summer school. Two years ago, we nearly doubled that to 59, and with Explore, we ran 137 bus routes. So we didn't have a school in your neighborhood, we did everything we could to get you to that school easily.
Are we allowed to ask you questions?
Sure, yeah, absolutely.
How does 137 compare to today? Like, what we did today? So I can do a comparison in my mind to like, a regular school.
I'm going to see if Scott Went is behind me.
You guys, Scott.
Rick Emmling is here.
The short answer would be, we ran about three-quarters of our operation during Explore.
That's, thank you.
About three-quarters of what we would normally do, we ran.
Good to have you here. Stumped you, man. I'm back on task.
And I don't, I won't speak for Rick, but they had to route and reroute twice in a very short time span, so it's quite an undertaking logistically for, for them to pull that off. So next, we want to look at teachers. Three years ago, we, we hired 236 teachers during summer school. Last year, we increased that to 468, and during Explore, we had 746 teachers providing instruction to our students. Something interesting about the 746, some feedback that we received last year from our teachers, is that they needed release time, so that they could collaborate with their colleagues, they could plan. And in the past, during summer school, we hadn't provided special teachers, and so we did that with Explore. So students might be able to go to Makerspace, or go to coding, go to PE or music, and teachers could have some release time to do some collaborative planning. So we were happy to be able to provide that.
We, we, excuse me, we might have heard this before, but what, what percentage of that 746 were full-time SPS teachers? How many came from outside the district, and how many were Kelly?
You know, I don't have that with me this evening. I could get that to you. I don't have that, do you have that?
We had about 125 external hires.
Terrific, thank you.
Some of whom, I think, were, ended up being employed with us during the regular school year, because they were pre-service teachers, which was a nice opportunity for them to...
That's a little bit of a misleading number, if they were planning to work here anyway.
I can't tell you how many of those are that actually are in that, because a lot of those were just for...
So on, on the same note, as we talk about staffing, this next slide is about salaries and benefits that we were able to pay out to our, to our staff. And this is, this would be all staff. So three years ago, $882,000, we were able to pay in salary and benefits. Two years ago, it was 2.2 million, and during Explore, we were able to pay out in salary and benefits 5.7 million to our staff. And when we think about a figure like that, we think about the economic impact that can have in our community with dollars going into our teachers' pockets and then back into our community. So it's a, it's a nice win for both our teachers and, and our community. Next is just the number of students that were in attendance. And this was, if they were, I think we count it by the hour. So if they were in attendance an hour, they were here, so hopefully, they were, they were here longer than that. But three years ago, it was about 3,600 students. Last year, we served 8,500 students, and during Explore, we had 10,600 that attended at least an hour during, during the session. It's, I might also note that while the instruction looked different with Explore, we really focused on project-based learning, we focused on experiences, it sometimes looked like camp. We did still provide about 800 students with formalized remedial services, which was an increase over the number of students we served last year. In addition to that, we also were able to provide personalized learning for our students through Lexia and Dreambox, because we were able to provide access to technology that we hadn't been able to do. So we felt like we were able to meet those needs even, even better.
I mean, the 10,607, so that, those are unduplicated kids who were, who attended for at least one hour.
Correct.
Do we have a sense of, or is it even meaningful to calculate sort of average daily attendance? I don't mean that in a technical state, state term, but how many were typically there for almost all or all of one of, one of those two sessions?
We can get those figures for you. I don't have them tonight. You know, one of the things that we did with Explore that was a little bit different than what we've done with summer school in the past, is we said, come as, as much as you can come. So if you have a vacation planned during the second week of June, don't let that deter you from coming to Explore. So if you can only be here a week, come for a week, and we want to engage you. So that probably...
We'd like to know a little bit more, because I, we're aware that some people did not attend a ton, and so it'd be a little more meaningful if we understood a little bit more about...
Sure, I can get that figure to you. Yep, absolutely.
And Ben, that is for both sessions?
Correct. That's total. That's June and July.
And, and I don't know if you've told us before, and I'm sure there's an email somewhere that I have, but just, can you ballpark that in terms of elementary, middle, high school, and then online students?
Online, I've got a slide for you, so I can show you that one exactly. Elementary versus secondary is a little bit, little bit harder for me. My guess would be probably about two-thirds elementary, and then a third secondary. Again, I can get you those figures, though. So this is one of my favorite statistics. This, this is our kindergarten students, so our pre-K students entering kindergarten. So for many, this was their first experience in, in our, in our halls. Three years ago, 188 students were served. Last year, huge increase, 818 incoming kindergarteners served, and then with Explore, 1,116, which is right at about half, I think, of our, of our total kindergarteners. And, and the next slide, I think, illustrates, well, and I actually, I don't have it on the slide, but the 818 that you see there, there were 88,731 instructional hours that we delivered, because we were going one, one month. Though 1,116, went a total of 170,058 instructional hours. So we more than doubled the instructional hours for those 1,000 kindergarten students.
The 1,100 kindergarteners, did they primarily go to their home school? Or not? Because, I mean, that's a huge benefit when they walk in the door in September or August.
Not necessarily. We, we tried. I think in most cases, they did, because that's what was most convenient. But there were, there were some situations where we may have had schools paired or something like that. So every opportunity we had, we tried to get them in their, in their home schools. Yes.
So I share your enthusiasm for this slide. I wonder if we have a plan to inquire of our kindergarten teachers, what they have noticed in terms of impact about that? Because I certainly think it would be tremendous for what Jerry said, and a whole host of other reasons.
Right. Actually, we have. Just about a week ago, I think we got the, the results back. We went on our first-day visits. We kind of combed the district and just see how the first couple of days of school were going. And we quickly heard a theme, that kindergarten feels completely different this year than it has in years past. So following those couple of visits, those first-day visits, we decided to administer just a very brief survey to kindergarten teachers and principals and say, what are you seeing? What perceptions, how's your perception changed, or has it been shaped by Explore at all? What are your students like? Are they more ready to learn? Not necessarily do they know more, are they better ready to learn? And three-fourths of those teachers said marked difference, that their students were better ready to learn, they knew routines, they could quickly get into procedures. And interestingly enough, they also said it impacted other students, because they quickly had models that they could, could observe and, and could, could join in with, so...
Full day?
Full day, yes.
Some tired kids, I bet people...
You know, I did get some feedback, too, that said they, they did, some of them did seem tired, so that's valid. Yeah, absolutely, yes.
I, as a parent, loved that tired.
They slept well.
To your point about the, the kind of readiness, I had some data that'll come out here. Sun, we're doing, we're getting ready to start off kindergarten readiness study.
Yep.
The mayor's commission, that's going to kick off, we'll have that data after the first of the year, which is exactly the kind of questions that you're asking that will come out of this. You know, were they ready? They behave? I mean, that two months can be significant of kids' maturity level, if you can, they'd be mature at six-years-old, but just comfort, comfort level. Makes a huge difference, you've been there before.
I definitely heard that that, that first kindergarten lunch was much, much different. That can be interesting.
How to cut over.
Right, exactly. Exactly. You mentioned online learning, this is something we're really excited about. These are online course enrollments, so three years ago, 246 online course enrollments. Two years ago, we had 922, and with Explore, we had almost 2,000 online course enrollments. So really excited about that opportunity. These are kids who, for whatever reason, want this avenue for learning, and they certainly took advantage of it. You know, most of those students are high school students, and when you look at the high school online enrollment and their seeded courses, we were able to, students were able to earn 1,312 credits during Explore. So that's 164 additional credits than we were able to provide last year to students, so...
On, on the enrollments for online courses, is that again, unduplicated, in most cases, high school students who logged on once? Or I presume, these, these would probably be of longer duration, like they finished the course.
Yeah, these, these are online course enrollments, so you may have had a student enrolled in two courses.
Gotcha.
So, these are the actual enrollments.
But they had to have completed it to be represented here.
Yes, yes.
And Ben, sorry to belabor, but it's probably too early to know, but was there any appreciable difference between how they did in the summer in an online course and how they do in the regular year?
You know, I, I don't know if we do, if we know that. Dr. Lemon is here, but it may be too early to speak to that.
...about the same, I think the data I provided to you in the spring, we see about the same number of each grade.
ABCs, Ds, Egs. Okay, thanks. Oh, that's fine. Peter was calling.
So, just about finished here. The next slide is our free-reduced lunch rate. We wanted to make sure that we were able to engage close to our district average, as far as our under-resourced students, or those qualifying for free-reduced lunch. Three years ago, we served 51.9% of our students qualified for free-reduced lunch. Two years ago, it was 53.9, and with Explore, it was 53.8. So we were just dead on to, to really where we were last year.
Was artworks included in the numbers you've given us tonight, or is that separate?
Yeah, artworks is included, and I can show you some, I have a couple of slides, actually, for artworks as well, but it is included, yes. And there it is. So artworks, and, and we, we highlight artworks, because it's been a favorite for summer learning for years and years, so we always like to, to bring it back. Three years ago, we had 507 students enrolled in artworks, and, and that was in one location for a half-day. So that's something to keep in mind.
For half a day.
What's that? Oh, I'm sorry, okay.
One teensy weensy location for half a day.
Yes, yes. And we worked on that, we worked on that. So last year, we had 749 students enrolled in two sites on each side of the city, again, a half-day program. And with Explore, we dipped just a little bit, but the, the thing to keep in mind there is that while we were still at two sites, we expanded to full-day programming. And that translated into this next slide, where you can see how instructional hours in artworks has increased over the last three years. So although enrollment was down just slightly, we still were able to provide more instructional hours than we ever were before. And finally, partners. This is kind of baseline data for us. We've never really engaged partners quite like we did in Explore this year, and we're really proud. We had over 20 formal agreements with partners to provide unique learning experiences for students, and they went on a total of 618 field trips during the course of the two months. So in addition to Scott and Rick's 137 bus routes, they also figured out how to do this. And, and we were going as far as Dogwood Canyon every, every day of the summer. So really amazing logistics there. And we, our partners were fantastic, we surveyed them as well. 100% of them want to partner again this year, so we'll be thanking them at a partner luncheon coming up, I think on October 31st. So you should have received some information, maybe we'll receive some more. So hopefully you can come out and thank them with us. So this is the good part of the presentation. I don't know that I spoke to this. But at your table, you all have a passport. Get it? Explore and we were trying to, okay. So you all have a passport. And in this passport, we want to provide you with some of the data you saw tonight, some additional data. And we kind of highlighted five areas that we're really proud of that we thought you might like to actually hear from some of those who either participated, a student or taught or somehow supported. So around support services, kindergarten readiness, curriculum development, experiences online. And we have guests next door who would love to talk to you for a few minutes about what they experienced with Explore. So we get to go on a field trip ourselves tonight. So the way we're going to do this is we're going to group you into groups. Lemon, how many? About four? Okay, so we'll have, we're going to get into five groups. And maybe we can have cabinet and the board work together and get into maybe two groups of four or so. And we'll move next door, our guests. We have passports for all of you as well. So we hope you'll come and join us and kind of get into groups of maybe four or five. And we will take you through about a 15-minute rotation where you can actually see kind of behind the scenes of some of the things that made Explore possible.
Ben, I apologize. Mr. Lee and I both have another community event that we have to attend and so I'm on my way out. But I did want to mention before I go, because you know I always have to say something. I appreciate your reminding us of your goals, increasing partnerships and experiences for students and support for under-resourced students and increased enrollment. And I believe that you have, that your evidence shows that you have worked really hard to meet those three goals. And I hope that we all remember as we move forward with this that we don't want to try to box our Explore program into a single focus on just academic achievement, although that is extremely important. And I believe as a former teacher, that when students have increased experiences, they have increased support and they are in a safe, secure, caring environment where food is provided, that they're going to learn. So I guess that's just what I want to say and then I'm going to head out and I'm so sorry, I'm going to miss the rest of this.
Appreciate that. Thank you very much. We'll come back. We're going to kind of run you through these stations so we'll bark at you a little bit and then we'll bring you back and we'll close the presentation. So thank you for taking some time and getting a little taste of Explore, behind the scenes and those that helped to make it happen and those that got to experience it. Finally, I want to spend just a couple of minutes as we close. And I want to kind of present to you some feedback that we've been gathering from our stakeholders really throughout the summer, beginning actually last year throughout the summer and we continue to gather input now. We surveyed stakeholders both in June and July and we surveyed about 6,100 teachers, parents, students, and partners, just to get an idea of what their experience, their level of engagement was with Explore. And we want to share a couple of highlights and then a couple of next steps based on that feedback as well. So we asked parents if their children enjoyed learning in Explore. And their perceptions remained very high, down just a couple of points from last year, but very good feedback there. We asked students a very similar question and the feedback was a little bit different. There was a nice increase in their satisfaction with the experience, about 11 and a half points on that particular question. We had feedback from staff last year that the technology wasn't what they needed it to be to effectively implement the curriculum. So we worked really hard to make sure that we did provide better training and better access and I think that showed up nicely. We had about a 17-point increase in that area. Additionally, we received feedback from staff last year that they needed more and more training on all the new software that is always coming their way. And we worked very hard again to provide training and again, we saw a nice increase there at about 14 points. Another question, we spent a lot of time on materials. Hopefully you saw at the curriculum table, there's a lot that goes into those classes. And so getting supplies for all those classes was a huge undertaking for Allison Pilli and her team. And we were happy to see that the results show that we are trending in the right direction with regard to materials that teachers need to teach their classroom. I will tell you that there are lots of districts that during the summer months, it's kind of up to the teacher to provide the materials they need and that's been my past experience as well. So being able to provide those resources was really important and we'll continue to work to do that and improve in that area. And then finally, one of the big questions that we wanted to find out is would you teach in Explore again? And last year, 75% of our teachers would teach summer school again. When we surveyed our teachers, 92% said they would engage in Explore again.
You may have covered this, but I frankly had to adjust to the different learning style that you were providing compared to what we were just doing. Was this anonymous?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, we administered, it was through Survey Monkey. It was anonymous.
And you said about 6,000 total-
Total respondents. So we had-
And that was teachers, students, partners, and who else did you say?
So we had about 1,000 parents who responded to our survey. 4,500, 4,500 students responded. About 600 staff and then-
And how are you defining staff? As teachers or?
Teachers, yeah. In that case, teachers. And then I think 24 partners, so.
Ben, can you say a little bit about what the 92.4% means? Is that, was it sort of off? Yes, no? Or was it strongly agree, agree?
Right, yeah. The way the survey was administered, there were four options to respond. So it was strongly agree, agree, disagree, or strongly disagree. So anybody that indicated agree or strongly agree would be represented in that figure. Okay, so what we also know is that Explore wasn't perfect and there are areas that we want to really focus on as we work to improve for next year. It was bigger than we ever dreamed it would be and more complex. And we know that means we have to continue to work to build great collaborative structures. So we have already begun our planning for next year and we're building teams out in a variety of different areas to focus on, areas that we need to improve in. Hiring process is, it was a huge undertaking to hire 700-plus teachers. I think annually during the regular school year, we probably hired a little over 200. So you can imagine what an undertaking it was. So there is a, there will be dedicated teams just for that hiring process to make that even smoother and more efficient. We really focused on attendance last year, I'm sorry, enrollment, making sure that people were aware of what was being provided. We know this year that we also want to focus on attendance. So although we said come, come when you can, we do want you there as much as possible. So we want to make sure that we're also really encouraging attendance as well as enrollment.
Do you want to maintain, because I remember hearing the target of 12,500-ish was that enrollment target? Is that your target? Because I mean, earlier, the trajectory's up, up, up and there is an upper limit. It can't be linear. At some point, you cap that as 12,5 more or less what you want to keep it here and then bring attendance, which was about 2,000 less than that. Is that your goal to bring that up to that level?
Right. You know, the team, as we've talked, we think we'll probably shift that goal that says increase enrollment. We think, we want the same numbers. We still want students to get out. And honestly, I would like as many as we can to come out and experience what we offer. But I don't know that growing it is necessarily the goal. I think it's getting them all there as often as we can as we look into next year. You probably saw during your travels next door that we worked really hard to completely revamp curriculum, particularly K-8. And Allison and her team did an amazing job. It was really wall-to-wall PBL. Units were built for teachers from day one to the last day of the session. But high school curriculum really hasn't, has not been touched much yet. So we'll have some teams working on improving high school curriculum in some areas there that we know are opportunities for improvement. We want to continue to expand partnerships. We had great, great feedback on all the experiences. So we'll work to continue to do that. And then finally, we'll look closely at our calendar. You know, we want to provide as many instructional days as we possibly can, but we also recognize that we have to have time to move from one month to the next to prepare for the upcoming school year. So we will look at all the feedback around the number of days and time for preparation and closure of the regular school year as we build out the calendar for next year. And so finally, we'll close as usual with a snazzy little video, if I can get it to play.
Explore this summer allowed us to experiment with new ways of teaching and learning.
What made Explore successful is that there were a lot of creative classes that students were able to have classes that they were really interested in.
We partnered with the Parks Department, the YMCA, the Boys and Girls Club to extend the learning beyond the regular school hours.
We went from 25 to 32 sites this summer. So we were invented right in the neighborhoods that needed us most. The kids are excited to be here because it is a different type of program.
You get to be with your friends and you get to play, meet different people.
What made Explore unique were the very exciting student experiences that we were able to provide with the help of our community partners.
Students build upon those experiences. They take their observations that they have and go back into the classroom and all of the things that they're doing in class then relate directly to something that they've seen or experienced here.
We provided transportation on over 618 field trips. And those field trips went everywhere from Dogwood Canyon to the zoo, the Discovery Center, the watershed. We were all over the place.
It's been fun for them, engaging. They love the learning experiences and they're able to take the learning that they have and take it home with them.
It's making it as hands-on and as concrete as possible for the students.
There's a lot of kids that have never been out into a setting like this.
Students got to do experiences that they might never have gotten to do, going fishing, doing archery.
It makes the kids excited and they can come out and fuel their passion with immersion.
Having these services provided during Explore gives parents the flexibility and kids a safe place to be all summer long.
We're doing the right thing for the kids. We're doing the right thing for the parents. And ultimately, that means we're doing the right thing for the community.
We provided a framework through which we can provide some really great programming and some great experiences. But our teachers and students are really what made it happen.
So before I close, I'll just, I'll mention that the video reminded me, I saw somebody fishing there. Today was our first day at Camp Wakanda and it's a pilot project we have with the YMCA right now. And really, it was born out of what we did with Explore, recognizing that taking kids into an experience week after week that's tightly anchored to a great curriculum is really the way to make a long-lasting impression. And I spent most of my morning today taking perch off of hooks. They had a really good day out there, caught lots of fish. So I had to go home and clean up after that, so.
I didn't expect to hear that tonight.
Yeah, yeah. I didn't expect to be taking fish off hooks, but it was a lot of fun. Dr. Anderson helped me with that, so. But any additional questions, I'm happy to answer.
I've got a few things, Ben, is it appears that our under-resourced enrollment, our free and reduced enrollment in Explore is still less than the free and reduced enrollment during the school year. Is there going to be any sort of effort to get that number, to get those numbers to move closer or even get that, get the Explore number to increase to be more?
That, I mean, that's really our hope. And we felt like we had a really great enrollment season. Enrollment, we hit our goals and I think we hit them in the right places. And I think, again, it's then that focus on, once they enroll, how do we keep them there? Get them there and keep them there. So yeah, we will definitely be talking about how we raise that number so that we can get more of our students who are under-resourced into these experiences.
I think that's, I just think it's so essential because this is, this is the subgroup that it seems to me that this can really make a difference.
Yeah, absolutely. And you know, our director of Explore, Dana Webb, who just came on in January from Byerman Elementary, has an absolute heart for under-resourced kids. So that is something that is on Dana's mind all the time when we're planning. How do we get those kids who she knows are in those neighborhoods to be engaged and to get to experience something like this that maybe otherwise they never have the opportunity to experience? So we have the right person on the job.
The overall number, just for clarity, is it's tracking with, we're at 54% district-wide free and reduced. So we are tracking at the number. Our goal is to expand that beyond that. Now, if you look at the elementary number, we're more like 60%. Middle school, it goes down to 40. You know, that's the district number, but that's how it's tracking in Explore also. So we're tracking with it, but you're exactly right. The opportunity and the big achievement gap opportunities and experience gap opportunities lie in our free and reduced population. So if there was a target for growth, that would be the target audience for growth. It's often easier to go solicit, you know, engagement from highly engaged parents with students that are attending well already. It's a more difficult task, but that's the task that's in front of our team.
I think that's, yeah, that's the good work right there. The other piece is just attracting staff. Heard a little bit from the support services that they worked it pretty doggone hard. And it would just seem to me that as, you know, I think, my impression is, is that this year's Explore session was, because it was a geometric progression in terms of enrollment, the thing got geometrically tougher to do. And attracting qualified staff is a challenge. But that makes all the difference too. But it's clear to me that you guys are already dialed into that. I'd encourage you to get the calendar in place if you don't have the calendar on the calendar. And in fact, probably, does Jace Group, his calendar committee, do they actually put Explore?
No, no, our team does that.
It's almost time, I would think, to go ahead and just do that.
So the only difficulty is Explore is impacted by snow days. Right? So when we, by snow days, so how many snow days we have this year determines the end date for our calendar? So if we have none, that's easy to set the date. But when you, if you have seven that you have to make up at the end of the school year, then you have to judge for how many days down you need in order to recoup, to move things along. So while it'd be awesome to calendar it, we've got a region, but when you have snow days that impact the end of our calendar, it really puts us in a bind to wait until February or March when you see the end of snow in sight to really lock down those days.
So in the meantime, you just got to encourage families to say, look, we're doing it. And it's generally going to be in this window.
You got a window, but the start date is a little-
So when you're planning a trip to the beach, it needs to be, yeah.
And that's kind of why we say, you know, come when you can. We know you have to plan your vacations and we'll get those dates as quickly as we can.
And then I've got one more thing, Charles, and then I'll get out of here, is that-
Don't leave, we need you.
Well, no, get out of it, so to speak, get off the table.
I'll get out of there.
I had just a really interesting visit with the kindergarten prep and she shared the same anecdote that everything, everything was different this year at the start of fall kindergarten, everything. And they are so far ahead right now than they would have been. And so I said, well, do you think, so, and you attribute that to Explore, that these kids were ready to learn because of Explore? She said, yes. And I said, does this, does Explore make early childhood programs unnecessary? And without skipping a beat, she said, no. She said, we still need early childhood. And I think that's something that we need to keep in mind, that as great as this is, this doesn't really replace anything.
It's an enhancement.
Yeah. In lieu of, it's a good place to start, but we need both.
Yeah, yeah. So, Charles.
I think I would just riff on that. I had, I heard that same anecdote too. And it makes, it makes all the sense in the world that kindergartners would be much more advanced and ready for this new experience that they call school, right, all day. And they're tired. Like, as a parent, that's a terrific thing. And it's different, but the value added is measurable, even anecdotally, at that kindergarten level. I think it will be interesting to measure the impact at other levels. For example, the summer slide. It's too early to know that yet. But we ought to be at some point in a position to reflect back and say, this made some difference in a variety of areas. Frankly, I would anticipate if the Camp Wakanda project, this is kind of shifting a little, is as successful as I think it is because that focuses on the Northwest quadrant. I would anticipate potentially that enrollments and attendance from kids of an Explore-esque experience this year may drive, not enrollment, I'm not interested in enrollment so much as I am attendance for those kids. Because, I mean, that just sounds, to use a technical term, cool. It really sounds very cool. So I would anticipate seeing all kinds of value added, both in terms of attendance as well as the learning outcomes. And I'm always going to be most fundamentally interested in the latter. But I would anticipate being able to provide evidence for that moving forward.
Yep, I agree.
Bruce, do you have something?
Well, mine's a pretty big picture, but it's to talk about Explore because oftentimes I wonder with seven board members and people in the community probably ask us the same question. and people in the community probably ask us the same question, and we may not have the same answer. How did summer school go?
Great.
Great, yeah, which is, I don't know what that means, you know, and maybe that's all they want to hear. But as board members, I think we need to understand, I would say it went great because you met your goals. You gave us your goals, you met your goals. So that, to me, I need to understand, I think, and we're just, I'm just talking about Explore because you're here. I need to understand some of these other programs. What are your goals? So when people ask me how Ignite is going, we've distributed sixteen thousand Chromebooks. Is that, is that the goal? Because if it is, we're doing great. You know, if it's not, so that's where I think you met your goals. It was there so all of us could say, "Well, here were their goals," and they met their goals. But I think I would like to know ahead of time what those goals are going to be because there were a lot of individual people asking questions about things that maybe I wasn't interested in, but you were interested in, and you're measuring whether it's successful based on that. Well, I think you ought to know that. I think you ought to know ahead of time if you say, "Here's what we're planning," and two or three board members say, "Well, here's something I want to know and you haven't even touched on it," then that, that doesn't fit together. So I think somewhere along the line, you met your goals. I think it was successful. You're looking at things ahead of time on what you're going to do to make it better. I just think all of us ought to know what those are so that when you come next year, we can all say, "We understand what you were trying to do," and, yeah, enrollment didn't go up, but we really don't care because attendance went up, you know? And I, one of your goals may not be the summer slide, but if we're, if board members are interested in that, then we need to put that as one of our measures somehow so that we don't have seven people saying seven different things about this, about things that we all are excited about, and I think we're all excited about what you're doing with this. But if we need different goals, then we need to talk about that before and rather than after it's done.
Do you wish to say something?
I, I have a lot of thoughts in my head, but I will just share a couple, I know. Well, first of all, I'd like to say thank you. Second of all, this has been a really engaging board meeting, mainly because we were able to explore.
Nice.
Yes, I know.
I appreciate that.
But I will say, I will say, okay. That is what makes learning fun, is engaging, experiential learning. And I'm thrilled to see our district take a calculated risk with summer school. And the fact that one hundred percent of our partners are willing to engage with us again next year speaks to a really, a great data point for us. And I know we love to use the word exciting, but it's more than exciting. So thank you for allowing us to explore. And I will say, one of my comments is, what was it, over almost eleven thousand students here? And I was talking to Carol and Rick about, you know, we talk about teachers, and we talk about students, and we talk about parents, but behind the curtain is all the bus drivers who tried to figure out how to get kids that did not go to their particular school to their right school, who maybe have never ridden the bus. And then all of the custodians who were doing different tasks this summer than what they normally would have been assigned in the summertime. And then think about all those meals that were served, all the kitchen staff that served all of those. So when I asked Carol, you know, "Was there focus groups or what kind of feedback did you get from those?" Because I'm actually glad to hear that we're not interested in moving the needle in terms of enrollment. You know, the maximizer and learner in me is excited to hear about continual improvement with what we've already been entrusted with in terms of those numbers. So I guess I just want to acknowledge all of those people behind the curtain to pull this off. I mean, this was asking a lot, and I'm also glad to hear that we're getting feedback from those people because they are critical to our success. So that's one thing. The other thing is, is I'm thinking about, you know, some of the survey data as you look at, when you initially establish your mission. And if, as you're establishing your goals for next year, you know, already creating what you want that survey data to be instead of at the end, "Did you have fun? Did you..." You know, I didn't see what the questions were. So I guess that's something that I don't need to be in the weeds on. But, but just looking at what are the outcomes we want from our parents, our teachers, our staff, our students, our partners, and then backing it up kind of from there.
Yep, absolutely.
I presume someone did probably look at that before you got started because you knew what you were after, but we may not be as aware of that.
Yeah, and we did, but we also have recognized that we can, we can focus on that a little bit more and tease out a little more specific data around some of the areas that we want to focus on. So you are exactly right.
All right, so you guys have all commented. Are we, do you have more?
No, it's just a question.
I'm losing control.
I know. Just one question, and this is far less interesting than anything we've talked about to this point, but not trivial. Is, when will we know sort of the amount of state funding that comes to us to support this much bigger enterprise that we had to share?
Ben's going to turn to me.
I'm going to look at Carol.
And actually, as you well understand, it is throughout the year that the state makes adjustments to the state adequacy target. And so it will truly be at the end of the year or into the next school year that we'll know for sure what this current year was based on. Excuse me. But without question, the state revenue fully has funded all the expenditures of this operation. We do have soft costs that we believe will also be funded through it and also equip us for preparing for the next year. So it's, this has been a phenomenal opportunity and fully funded at that.
Okay, so the benefit of being me is I get to speak last. That was outstanding, very joyful. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Oh, boy. You ready?
Who's in charge?
I'm ready. Yeah, so here we go. We're going to move on to the ever-exciting board policy adoptions and revisions following that. And we have a policy presented to the board for first read at the September sixth, two thousand and sixteen study session. And that policy was provided to everyone and was attached to the board docs. And that is revision of Board of Education policy, JHG, reporting and investigating child abuse and neglect. So I would like to know if we could get a motion to adopt policy, JHG, reporting and investigating child abuse neglect as presented.
So moved.
Thank you. Tim, second.
Second.
Charles, and at this time, please vote. Okay, so the votes are in on that. We have no new business, so we can move past that. We have unfinished business, which is the local model compliance plan for special education. Is that a consent item or do I just keep reading?
It's just a item for vote. We presented this for first read last meeting, and this is an annual adoption. And Phyllis spoke to that, and we're ready for...
So the issue is that the board approved the local model compliance plan for special education as presented, that we do recall very specifically being reported on last time. And the information on the proposed local model compliance plan for special education already has been shared. And do we have a motion?
So moved.
To approve.
To approve.
And a second? Okay, and now we will vote. Oh, I'm sorry. It was motion by Alina, second by Charles. It was a close third by Tim, but I didn't count it.
If we need a backup seat.
Just in case.
Everybody ready for anything? Okay, did that happen? All right.
Very good.
Very good. Now we're going to move on to ten point oh two, real estate purchase. Is that okay?
Yeah, great.
Good evening. We have discussed this topic in a couple of different closed-session meetings. This opportunity to purchase a small tract of land that is located at seventeen fifty-seven South Kimbrew. And it is right next to Sunshine Elementary. And the information posted is requesting that the board approve the property located at that address for the purchase price of thirty-two thousand five hundred dollars. The property is approximately point two-six-zero-one acres. And while it is small, it is mighty in that it is a corner section of land. And causes us then to have that, the full run through there, all the way to the corner along Sunshine. So if you have any questions, I'd be happy to entertain those. This came forward to us. The person who owns the property had an opportunity to sell and offered to the district the first right to purchase it, given its proximity to our elementary site.
We have had an opportunity to consider this and discuss this quite a bit. Does anybody have any additional questions from Ms. Embry?
No, just commented it's below the assessed.
It is below the assessed value, yes.
So can I please have a motion that the board approve the purchase?
I need to correct my statement. Below the appraised value.
Appraised, I meant. You're right.
Yeah.
Yeah, appraised.
We know what you meant.
Now, may I go?
Yes, you may.
I want you guys to get it right. I'd just rather you did it before I started making my comments. Is there a motion that the board approves the purchase of the real property located on the premises at seventeen fifty-seven South Kimbrew, Springfield, Missouri, six-five-eight oh seven, at the purchase price of thirty-two thousand five hundred dollars, and authorize the superintendent or designate to execute the documents?
So moved.
Is that you, Charles? And a second?
Second.
Bruce?
Yeah.
Charles is the first, Bruce is the second. Now we'll vote. All right, so that vote is in. Kathy, do we have any public comments to address non-agenda items this evening? Thank you. We're going to move on to John Dugman taking over this meeting.
There you go. You can have a drink, water, and relax.
He was talking about my iced tea, everyone. That was not the thing to say.
That was taken inappropriately. Cabinet reports, and we'll turn it over to Cabinet for updates. Lisa?
I don't have anything new and exciting, other than I would like to reiterate to, that what Carol had said, that the HR and payroll teams have been working very, very hard to try to get everything entered and so that the payroll runs without issue. So I want to say a public thank you to all of those folks that are working long hours to do that.
Awesome. Thank you. Mike?
Just a couple of quick ones. I just want to thank the Explore team for tonight. That was a lot of coordination and effort, not only for tonight, but really the whole program. It's outstanding for kids, so that was excellent. The other one I want to let you know is yesterday, we had a collaborative moment between professional learning, blended learning, learning supports. We hosted our first Appy Hour, which is an opportunity where we had ticker time in the beginning, and then Appy, followed by Appy Hour connecting those two events. Had about three hundred and fifty teachers, TTE teachers, yesterday at Glendale High School. And it was awesome, especially the Google Card work, which was virtual reality. And it was pretty special. You could see what they were going to do the next day in their classrooms. It was fun. Two, I'd let you know we're kicking off the Ignite grants next week with our first award winner. I don't know how they're going to do it. Those are very difficult to choose off of the Twitter feed. So I'd recommend you go to hashtag ImagineGrants to see those also. Third, on October first, we will be at MSBA that Saturday. But Springfield Public Schools will be hosting the first-in-the-nation Lego storytelling contest at Parkview High School. We have about three teams, fourth graders, going over, and they will be designing stories, storyboarding it, and with Legos and then writing at the same time. So very excited about that venture. Want to thank Allison Pilly and her team and everybody who's put that together. And my son is like, "Dad, let's go." I wouldn't be quiet about it.
Why didn't we know about this before we made our reservations for MSBA? My wife would disagree.
And then last, I just wanted to say a shout out to the foundation and thank them for their quarter million dollar donation to the school district and how that's been infused into classrooms all over our system, in elementary, middle school, and high schools.
Carol?
Well, that was fun. And now my information will not be as exciting as that. It is to provide you with an update with regard to some of the recent activity, with regard to some bills and the veto actions and the resulting withholds from the governor that have been announced. And overall, Governor Nixon announced that fifty-nine point one million would be withheld. And the impact to public education is approximately twenty-four point four million. One might ask, what is that impact to Springfield Public Schools? Of the sixteen point five million impacting school transportation overall, we have calculated out that that's approximately a sixteen point four-five percent withholding. If we apply that out to our data, that would result in close to two hundred and ninety thousand in withholding in the current year. The foundation formula would be impacted statewide by six million dollars, so that's a much smaller spread, resulting in just a little over a hundred thousand dollars to Springfield Public Schools. And all of that, again, is contingent on how the state adequacy target plays out in the year. So these are very soft numbers. But overall, while it sounds like a lot, it's just a little over half of one percent of the revenues that have been identified. Prop C was also identified with a statewide reduction. And that impact to our fund balance percentage would take us from the sixteen point nine-nine percent that I shared earlier down to approximately sixteen point eight-two, so about a point one-seven of a percent drop. So all of this is very new information. We will await confirmation from the Department of Elementary and Secondary Education in terms of the real impact to us and then react accordingly. But all that to say, it's comfortable when we have fund balances that can support being agile and react to whatever we face. Otherwise, life is great. We're working.
Sorry.
Otherwise, we continue to work behind the scenes to gather additional information to prepare for the board retreat with regard to the facility master plan discussion. And have continued to enjoy a variety of conversations and learned a lot with regard to some of the options for us. So we're excited to continue that conversation and look to come from.
Very good. And just in line with that, obviously, we know the Fremont ribbon cutting is next week, and that will be followed immediately by the retreat. And facility master plan is one of the key items and the biggest item on that list. We'll have a few items. We've worked on the agenda based on your feedback. Revisit our norms for just a little bit, our board goals for a little bit, but really then dig into, I think, a deep conversation regarding next steps regarding facility master plan. So if you have questions, you have things that you want us to be prepared with, feed as much as you can. We're working with MGT to get answers to those things so that it can be a productive conversation. We may not have every item by Tuesday, but we think we have some information that will help you move the conversation forward. So thank you for your feedback in that process. Legislative update, I'll just move straight to that, and Carol gave it, basically. We had veto session. There were some other small, minor impacts, but very little on our daily operations. The budget is the biggest component, and we'll monitor that and see where it lands. There is a lot of conversation, and you'll hear this at MSBA next week, a little bit on some projected budget concerns with not just this year's budget, but upcoming year's budgets, upcoming year budgets based on some projections and tax cuts that could be enacted at some point. So I'd say stay tuned to that. We're monitoring it closely, and we'll let you know when we have more information. That's it.
That's it. So next, you can have plus delta if you wish. And we are not going to be meeting in executive session this evening, so that's really exciting. Does anybody have a motion to adjourn this meeting?
So moved.
Come on. And a second?
Second.
Tim, was that you?
Yes, it was.
So Charles, moved, and Tim seconded. We are going to vote on that?
Yes.
Yes, it requires a vote.
Just a minute.
Hang on.
Going to vote on it when it comes up?
She's getting it in there, so it will be ready in one second.
I bet I know what the votes...
Nobody let me down on this, or there's trouble.
Okay.
There it is.
There's the motion in second. There's the motion in second.
And the motion carries.
Thank you all. Very good.
We did it.